All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 16th at 5:00 PM. And with that being said, Clerk Bullock, would you take the role?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels? Seven members present, you have a quorum of the committee.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Three. We actually have two sets of meeting minutes tonight, one from May 9th, 2022, which was a regular Committee of the Whole Meeting, and then the very next night, we actually had our budget meeting in the neighborhoods out at Foster Community Center. So with that said, Vice President Wood?
I would move the two sets of respective minutes as written.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to, let's see, Agenda Item Number Four. This is public comment on agenda items. As always, we will provide anybody in the gallery with up to three minutes to speak to any of the agenda items tonight. There are a number of resolutions, there are some discussion items, we'll be looking to set public hearings, and of course, we'll be vetting the 2000, I should say fiscal year 2023 budget. We would simply ask you to come up on a first come, first served basis and state your first and last name for the record. If there's any public comment, come on up. All right, it looks like, okay, Loretta's on her way. It's good to see you, Loretta.
I feel like I have my own parking place down here. All right, I'm here tonight to talk about the Morris Park Pool and the allocation of funds for it. I think you've all heard from enough of the constituents how much they want and value and need this pool. Whether or not there's a logic to the process is to be debated. Seems like it's kind of a chicken and an egg kind of thing. The Friends Group says they have to have $118,000 to get construction plans before they can apply for grants. The Park Board says they have to have the grants before they can get the construction funds. It's leaving us constituents out here with our heads kind of spinning. But in the end, what it boils down to is you guys have the ability to find $118,000 in the ARPA funds or in some fund somewhere in the city budget, and you have enough people that have made it clear to you that they want this to happen. So be aware that you have an opportunity before you, we're watching. If it goes the way we think it should, we'll be happy to thank you, and if it doesn't, you'll be hearing from a lot of people. Thanks, bye.
All right, do we have anybody else? All right, come on up.
Hello there, my name is Libby Rice, and I am a Fourth Ward resident. I too am wanting to speak about the funding of the Morris River Pool. When I first arrived here in Lansing, it was a viable part of the city resources and a wonderful place. I didn't spend a lot of time there, but it was magnificent. It was also a real gathering place, and we talk about placemaking, and we talk about having youth recreation. I'm tired of all the new ideas that we continually come up with and then put funds behind that are, you know, brand-new facilities, perhaps. When we have existing facilities that are premier, I will say that premiere, why can we not just keep these wonderful resources alive? And to me, the Morris River Pool would make us, guess what, a world-class city. We were the home of the engineer who designed this, and we are one of, what, 16 that still exist out of something like 120 that once were built? I mean, I'm just astonished that we have let this go. So, guess what, I'm here to see how the council and how the city as a whole proceeds on this, on the funding. I understand it is not on this budget. So I'm here to gather information, and yes, indeed, as residents, you'll be hearing more from me if it's not considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Seeing none, that takes us to Discussion/Action Item Number Five C. This is a resolution to set a public hearing in consideration of re-adopting the codified ordinances. And just quick background, back in 2017, we, there was a hiccup of sorts, didn't re-codify our ordinances. Historically, we've done that every 10 years. Starting in February of 2018, we decided that, just to make sure that we didn't have a repeat of what happened in 2017, that we would actually re-adopt our codified ordinances here in the city of Lansing on an annual basis, right around, you know, budget time. So with that being said, what this resolution would do is set a public hearing for June 13th at 7:00 PM for the re-adoption of our codified ordinances here in the city of Lansing. Vice President Wood?
Thank you, and with the explanation from the President, I would move the resolution to set the public hearing again for June 13th.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to Item Five D. This is a resolution to set a public hearing. Mr. Kilpatrick, if you could come down, and you could actually just sit right here at the table in front of us as I read this off. This is actually to set a public hearing in consideration of a noise special permit. This is a request from the Michigan Department of Transportation to allow construction of the Horsebrook Creek culvert replacement project on Grand River Avenue east of Delta River Drive from 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM on the following days and weekends, and anytime on weekends or holidays from June 17th through June 30th. We have, and again, this is simply a resolution to set a public hearing for May 23rd at 7:00 PM, but we requested you to come down here, number one, so we could get some background information just in terms of the request, the type of work that's going to be done. Again, this request essentially work around the clock and the necessity of it, but we've also received a number of emails regarding some concerns, and so we just want to make sure everything was noticed properly, and we're going to turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council President Hussein. So, as you stated, this request was simply passed along, it's an MDOT request, their project, so Grand River Avenue, Horsebrook Creek, which is, you might not even realize there's a culvert there, kind of across from what was a former school, across the street, now UAW Hall, I believe it's UAW, correct, there. And so this culvert is in need of replacement, so those of you who drove down Miller Road last year when that was replaced, this cannot be done part with, so when the culvert comes out, the entire road has to be closed. We did receive numerous emails, and those have been sent on to MDOT, that would be for them to respond to, so I can't really say, you know, exactly why they want this, other than in discussions with them, they do not believe they need to work extended hours, however, to, you know, reduce the amount of time that Grand River is closed. They are asking for this in case they get behind schedule or run into, you know, unintended issues with the construction. So it will be up to MDOT to say why they need it and to justify that, as well as to speak to some of the issues that were presented in the email, especially the pictures that were there, as far as the extent of the work that was needed, the tree clearing, and any restoration they expect to do after that. So they have been invited on the 23rd, and I told them several things that I thought council would want to hear, you know, including the need for the extended hours if this entire two-week period was necessary, or whether it could be less, you know, fewer days, or say until 10 o'clock at night, or something like that. So that will be kind of up to them to justify that, and if there are any other questions or concerns that you would have not expressed in those emails, I can certainly pass those along to MDOT, but I did tell them to also be prepared to talk about the pictures there and the, you know, the site, and any notice they provided to the residents. I will note that a number of these emails, that some of them appeared to be a template, they are from folks that are outside the 500-foot radius that we sent notice to. That does not mean that their concerns are not valid, but just looking at the location of the residents, most of them are in this neighborhood, but again, outside that 500-foot radius that we mailed to, and I believe that was about 40 households in that area.
All right, do we have any questions or comments? Vice President Wood?
Just to clarify, Andy, that particular neighborhood has dealt with sound and noise issues for some time, so I think that's why they are very cognizant as well as active to try to make sure that they understand what's happening and what's going on. We understand that sound doesn't stop at the 500-foot mark, unless you're putting up a plexiglass around the entire neighborhood to make sure that they're not affected by it, so, you know, just because they're not part of that 500-foot mark, I think we have to make sure that we are paying attention to their concerns.
Oh, certainly. I mean, any concern is valid, whether they're a resident in that area, or even just drive by or use the park or anything. So it's just pointing out that I, you know, as far as the people that would be most directly impacted, I'm not aware of many of those submitting, which doesn't mean that they're not going to come down on the 23rd or submit something between now and the 23rd.
And I think the question that was asked by the President, we know that they've all received notices.
They should have. I mean, so what we did is we actually took, because the work area is not just the point where the culvert is, we took what MDOT said the work area would be, which is about 100 feet either side of that point where Grand River crosses the culvert, and so we actually picked, you know, 600 feet for the crossing point, and that added another, you know, 10 or 15 residences or properties.
Thank you.
Councilman Garza?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mr. Kilpatrick. How long does the road plan on shutting down? Because I know that's not a traditional culvert, it's like a concrete...
It's a concrete block culvert. So, again, I'm not going to speculate, I can say that our Miller Road project was several months, so I don't believe this, this culvert is not as large and doesn't have as many issues, but it would be better to have MDOT speak to the entire length of the project. The request they had here was for some specific elements that would be done during that two-week period, but my assumption is it's definitely going to be more than two weeks, because obviously they've already started to do some clearing and put in an access road, so my assumptions, we're probably talking a month or so of the project, but I will let them, you know, have a specific response to that with the timeframe.
All right, thank you. And my understanding is you did send out a letter. Did you clarify in that letter that this is an MDOT project and that any...
We did. We specified, yeah, it was requested by the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
Do we have other questions? Sorry, do we have other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice President Wood?
With that, I would move the resolution for setting the public hearing on May 23rd for our council meeting this evening.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to Action Item E. This is a communication from Kyle Richard regarding the city budget priorities. In this communication, he speaks specifically to support for a second sustainability staffer, as well as for working to hold the Lansing Housing Commission accountable with regards to the sale of their scatter-site homes. That being said, Vice President Wood?
President Hussein, I would move that this communication be placed on file.
There's a motion to place on file? Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to, let's see, Number Six, Presentations from Union Representation. Mr. Com, if you want to come on down, we'll actually have you join at the table that Mr. Kilpatrick was just sitting at. I'm not sure if he left the microphone on, but make sure that that green light is actually on, so we can hear you. I don't see anybody else out there. Typically, what we've done, well, I think the last time we did it was actually back in 2019 due to the pandemic, but we've brought our union representation in during the budget process, and we essentially have asked them to review the budget, and then what we want to do is, you know, essentially provide for the platform to allow for some input, essentially. What's good about the budget, the tools that they need essentially for their frontline workers, are they in there? Are there deficiencies? Are there things that we should be looking at? As an example, come budget priority time, into future budgets, that type of thing. And so we wanted to make sure that we did allow for the opportunity tonight. I remember back in 2019, Vice President Wood saying, you know, this is not a, no, she was president at the time, it's not necessarily meant to be a back-and-forth between members of the administration and our union representation, and by no means should it be misconstrued as, you know, contract negotiations. This is simply an opportunity to hear from those folks that are leading, you know, kind of our frontline workers in terms of this budget, what it does, you know, again, what it does to help them in their efforts to serve the citizens of the city, but also, you know, maybe those areas where we need to be looking at in the future in terms of deficiencies. Okay? So with that being said, Mr. Com, you have our undivided attention?
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. First, I have some handouts here. They're real short reading, I don't know who I can give. Like I said, I appreciate you letting me come tonight and speak on this. First, this handout is called ALS 360. It's from Stryker Corporation. Our issues are equipment, whether it's rigs, ALS equipment, our monitors, our cots, our... Everything has a shelf life.
Let me stop you real quick, just so as we hand this out, and I should have done a better job at introducing you. So we have Dan Com, who is actually the president of the IAFF, you know, which represents our firefighters in the city of Lansing, so what we'll be talking about tonight is the fire department's budget. Okay, sorry, thank you.
So everything has a life expectancy. The anomaly here is that we make so many runs a year that our life expectancy is diminished probably by half. All these things that we're talking about are very expensive things, and I don't expect our administration to be able to just write checks constantly when we need it. This ALS 360 from Stryker Corporation flatlines the budget for 10 years, it keeps us in new equipment, repairs the equipment, they supply everything, it's all covered, you can read through it, it's 45 pages of not very exciting stuff, but if you look in there, it kind of shows you where we're at, where we should be, shows the services they provide, and like I said, the big thing is this makes it a flat line so that in five, every five years, we don't have to come back and ask for half a million dollars for cardiac monitors. So this would give us a flat line for the budget for the next 10 years. Our equipment is the lifeline. These are the things that make a difference between life and death for people, and we need to make sure that we have the best of the best, that we can do our jobs. Our equipment's good, we've been, you know, handling it, but we need a replacement plan, and you'll kind of hear that throughout this presentation, if you will, that it's a replacement plan problem. You know, this 360 can help us a lot with EMS equipment, but that leads us to apparatus, ambulances, fire engines. We need to develop a plan, and we've had one, that will sustain the replacement of our apparatus, whether it's a fire truck, an ambulance, ladder truck. We need to have a plan and stick to it, whether that, and fund it, because we're going to run into the same problem we had before, and the grants just aren't out there to get five, six fire engines at a time. So we need to have a plan and put money away for the future. And this is, like I said, this is kind of my thing here, is that we need to start planning for the future, and it has to start soon, because our newest engines, we have one new one that's two years old, the rest of them are 2014s, and those get a lot of wear and tear. Our ladder trucks, we have a 2001, a 2007, and a 2022, a newer one, which is great, but they all break down, they all have problems. We're running a 2001 ladder truck quite often as our first-out ladder trucks. I know they're expensive, but if we need a replacement plan and we need to fund it to keep that going. That takes me to our stations. Three of our stations, well, two of our stations were built in the mid-'50s. The other station, the oldest station, was built in 1977. Three of our six fire stations, we still share bathrooms, both genders. We have no separate sleeping, we have no separate showering, we have no separate restrooms. We're still sharing that in three of our stations, which to me, in this world we live in, is unacceptable. We need to make changes, there's repairs that need to be done, maybe it's replacement. Station nine on Glendale is, seems like it's getting band-aided a lot, and we're just fixing the problems, and it might be time to look at building a new one. I know these aren't cheap, I understand, but we have to come up with plans, plans for the future to keep this sustained. And the rigs, you know, and vacancies. Right now, today, we're 15 people short. We had an application period that closed down, I believe, the first week in March. Here we are in the middle of May, and I don't believe that's moved forward one bit. This is costing overtime money, it's causing fatigue on the people who are taking the overtime, working the overtime to make sure we're staffed for the safety of the citizens, and we need to get these positions filled. And we need to figure out a way to streamline this a little better. HR's been great, they've been working with us, we've been bringing stuff to them, but we're still not there, and we have to get these vacancies filled. Summer's coming, high-vacation periods, we're going to be hurting. We need to get them filled ASAP. And, you know, I represent the hardest-working people that I know. They're professional, they do their job, they rarely complain to anybody but me. They just want help. They want people, they want good equipment. One of the biggest stressors, our ambulance riders say, is the failure of equipment. Computers, monitors, it's when our equipment fails that's the most stressful on us. We're making more runs than anybody else in the state as far as EMS runs go for fire departments. They're doing a great job, but the stress that's caused by having poor equipment, and it's really starting to add up. And like I said, these people come to work every day and do a dang good job with what they have. So, you know, the short term, I'm not really complaining, I don't want to, you know, I'm not even going to come and ask for more people anymore, I would just like to have the number of people that we're supposed to have, because I think that will go a long way to get started. So, if there's any questions?
I'm sure there will be. Councilman Garza?
Thank you, Council President. So I've got a couple of questions. Good evening, Dan, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So, are there any grants being applied for at this point in time?
I don't believe so. I don't know that for a fact. The grant writing is through the Fire Department Administration. As of right now, I don't think there are, I don't believe we qualify for any staffing grants right now, like the SAFER grant, because we are fully budgeted, all our positions are budgeted for. I don't think we can get that unless we're not budgeted for our positions.
Okay, looks like Mark Lawrence may have any answers.
I can tell you all, the Stryker program that's in front of you is the program that we submitted to Congresswoman Slotkin's office, it's her community-funded project proposal. This is the one we substituted, the second one.
Okay, is that a guaranteed grant, though?
No, it's not.
Okay, all right. That's what I thought. Okay. So, another question here, what is the reason the positions aren't being filled right now?
I don't know. Communication from the HR on that matter is not very clear with the union, so I'm not sure why they're not being filled.
And how many positions are you down?
15 as of Sunday, I believe, and the big thing is, by, in the next 18 months, we're going to double that. We have 15 to 18 people leaving next fall, so...
Yeah, just very quickly, because she might be able to speak to the point, Mr. Sessa, go ahead.
Thank you, City Council. Please be informed that we did meet with HR this morning, and we are aware of the vacancies, and we are working very closely now with our chief to make sure that they're done. I do believe that some, a few positions were recently filled, I don't know exactly the correct number, but we are aware and we are working hard to get them filled as quickly as we can, so thank you.
So, President Com, how long have these positions been unfilled for?
It's hard to say, you know, it's, we've been down anywhere from 10 to 15 on and off, you know, we have people retire, we don't hire right away, we had a problem, you know, with getting applicants for a while. I believe the application numbers are up, which is good, but we've been not fully staffed, fully staffed, at least, I'm going, it's going on three years. I know it's hard when you have down by two, down by three, it doesn't make a lot of sense to hire a class of three, I understand that, but when you start getting into the 10 to 15s, 15s, five people a shift, five people a shift darn near covers all our vacation spots. So if people are off on vacation, those spots are filled with six people a shift. So it makes a big difference on the daily operation when you get into the 10s and 15s. Five is understandable, like I said, I can understand the cost factor of putting five people through when you can wait and get 10. It's a weird dynamic right now, because we weren't getting the applicants, there's a lot of things going on, but we have to do something, we have to figure something out to keep us fully staffed, so we don't keep going on this yo-yo where we're fully staffed or close, and then we go down to 15 again, for whatever reason, come back and just keep going back and forth. It causes overtime, which is cost, you know, and I hear a lot about the overtime that we've been working, well, the only reason we're working is because people aren't there, we don't have the people to do it, so...
So, and then in four months from now, you're saying roughly about 15, 18?
Well, in 18 months. Next fall, we have another 15 to 18 people leaving. So I think, I think we live in a different world, we have to figure out our hiring process a little differently than we used to do it. You know, contingent offers, that's being thrown around by other municipalities, they go to LCC, say, "You finished? You got a job." We don't do that here, and we've never had to do it here, but things have changed, and now we have to look at all the options that are out there and things we can do to make our hiring process a little more modern, I guess.
All right, well, I appreciate you being here, and I read an article from Lansing State Journal recently regarding the demographics for the Fire Department in the city of Lansing, you know, there's been, you know, accusations about racism, you know, in the Fire Department, but from what I'm reading, that we are doing the best in the state of Michigan as far as demographics, representing the community.
I'm very proud to say that, and I think you should all be proud, and the social issue should be proud, we're one of the highest, we're well above average across the nation, and we're the highest, one of the highest in the state.
Great, all right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. Dan, one of the things I'm concerned about, and we had for several years in our budget priorities, was to do a study of the facilities, especially after we dealt with the Hillsdale fire station and having to close that because of the problems that had, you know, created in the living area for our firefighters. You mentioned one of the fire stations. Are you seeing some of the same things that we saw with the Hillsdale, which is asbestos leaking roofs?
We're not there yet. I will give credit to Building Services, they've been doing a pretty good job with a pretty poor piece of structure, I think. They've gotten on it relatively well, but it's just one thing after another now. It's, you know, we, they finally got some of the plumbing fixed, but then the ceiling was falling in, and, you know, there's issues that just keep creeping up. You know, on the Hillsdale station, it was, there was mold problems.
Yeah.
We're not there yet, but if this continues to go down the path it's going with just these little fixes, I think we're heading there. I think that station in particular, although it's, you know, not the oldest, it, it's in pretty rough shape. You know, it's a big building, it definitely needs to be looked at for the future. I mean, can we live in there for a couple more years with doing what we're doing? Yeah, but I think we need to look down the road, we got to start planning ahead, because these things are going to run in, we're going to run into them, it's a train coming with all this stuff I'm talking about, that someday, there's just not going to be enough money. You know, it's whether it's turnout gear replacement that we're looking at in probably another seven years, I think, again, of a whole department of turnout gear renewal, we have to get new gear. If we don't come up with plans for this stuff, it's hard to come up with the cash at once. And I think if we put longer, long-term plans in, replacement plans, I think it makes it easier on the city for budgeting, it makes it easier on everybody so we can get the equipment we need to do the job.
I thought I heard you say that in the fall, that there's the potential of another 15...
Next fall.
Next fall.
2023, there's another 15 to 18 people that will leave.
Okay. Do you know, I know one of the things that we promoted and done with the Police Department is front-loading. Is that anything that's been considered for the Fire Department?
I've been here for 23 years, and I've never seen it.
Okay.
Sure, Mr. Long?
My understanding is that the mayor is working with Linda Sanchez-Gazella and our new fire chief on exactly that right now, working on, you know, we see, we see these potential retirements and things coming up and are working on front-loading right now.
But it's not in this year's budget?
I'd have to check, I'm not, I'm not that specifically.
Jake?
Specifically?
It is front-loading in this year's fire budget.
I believe it's been authorized by the mayor, although not specifically included in the budget. We have said that, sorry...
Can you come to the podium?
So, yeah, yeah, why don't you come on up? I was going to essentially restate, but if it's more than ten words, yeah, I'd appreciate you being up here. We'll first let Mr. Brower address it and then if the mayor wants to chime in, he certainly can. Jake, go ahead.
Yep. So, overall, the mayor has different opportunities, or you could speak to it yourself, I believe, authorized some front-loading of positions with the police and fire departments. When it comes to our fiscal year budget, we do not budget for vacancies except for the fact that we have a citywide vacancy factor. And so, overall, we anticipate that there's going to be some positions that are vacant over the course of the fiscal year. However, we don't hold that to specific departments. And so, all positions are funded within the Fire Department budget and the, all the other departments. And I know our HR team is working very around the clock to resolve that.
Certainly. Mayor Shore, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just catching up, sorry. Yes, we are actually looking at front-loading. I spoke with the chief about this last week. We've done it with our Police Department and we're certainly going to do it with the Fire Department. Front-loading doesn't need to be budgeted because it's not an additional position. It's taking dollars that are available and using them in essence to be over, understanding we're going to have retirements. So, we absolutely are looking at the next class that comes in and we will be front-loading. I'll also point out that we have a fire academy going on right now with many young people. I think there's nine or ten, and I met with them last week, and I think at least half to three-quarters of them want to be here. So, assuming they pass their firefighter one and two, we're looking at having options. We're also continually hiring. We usually do a few-month hiring and then we have to evaluate and offer and then we hire again and we hire again and we hire again. Certainly, the retirements have taken a toll. We've, and Dan knows this, we've hit a place where there's just a lot of people retiring, but we will continually hire and, you know, we get it, we get it manageable and then people retire and then we're hiring again. Certainly, we have to go through all the processes to make sure background checks and physical ability and mental health, but, but we're certainly going through all of that and front-loading is absolutely an option that we have used for police and that we will be using for fire. Our chief is here a week and he's looking at all of this, but certainly, this is top priority for him and for me and we'll continue to work on it. I know Dan mentioned fire stations. That's certainly a conversation we're all going to have right here. We don't have the money for fire stations, but, you know, that may be a conversation that we have to work together. If anyone has any ideas on finding that money, let me know. It's been suggested that we go to the ballot for a millage. I'm always hesitant to do that because it's taxpayer dollars and tap money out of their pockets, but we may have to look at that for a police station, for a fire station. These are all things that we're going to have to look at as we look at a sustainability plan. I've been to those fire stations, I've been to every one, and I have seen the challenges we have in our fire stations. They're old, they need work. Again, we have to figure out what money we're going to put into it and where it's going to come from, and that's going to be all of us together or it's just never going to happen. And I know the firefighters are interested also, so very aware. Thanks, Dan.
Well, just to, just to be clear, the concept of front-loading means that you have a fully-staffed department, knowing with the anticipation that you have retirements coming. So, what you do is you then hire so that by the time those people are retired, you will fill that. But we do not have a fully-staffed Fire Department or Police Department right now. So, I just want to...
Well, yeah. That's why I thought the conversation was a bit premature because we have, right now, in the number, they were a little bit uncertain, but it's, I think, one hundred ninety-eight officers. We're, I think, we're funded for two hundred and eleven, so we have a number of vacancies there. They're expecting to lose another seventeen.
We are looking to over-hire. Front-loading in terms of over-hiring. So, if we have fourteen vacancies, we're going to hire twenty or twenty-one, understanding that there are retirements if the candidates are there, if they pass the test.
And we understand that. I think part, part of the issue too, Dan, is, is we need, and I think this budget does that, we need a more robust HR department, frankly. And what this, and what this budget will do is add a deputy director, but also an additional hiring specialist. And so, there's some help, I think, in way of the proposed budget. I think there's some things that we can do with regards to the ARPA dollars. I know the Ways and Means Committee is taking a look at that in earnest and diving deep into that to, yep, absolutely, to hopefully provide some, some help and support. But then part of it is, you know, making sure that some of the other departments that you're so dependent on, such as the HR department, that they're adequately funded and staffed. So, we'll continue that route.
And I appreciate that. And I know the challenges are not easy. I am not coming in here saying nobody's not doing their job. I think the fact is, we all need to work together and I'm committed to working with you, the mayor's office, anybody that wants to sit down and talk to get to where we need to be. I just see a train coming.
Yep.
And I'll probably be gone, but it's coming and you all are going to be left here to deal with it. So, we, I want to help head it off and I am here for anybody that wants to talk about anything. I'm always game to an open ear to try to, you know, make progress and we're more than willing to help with HR or anybody else that would like our assistance, so.
And we appreciate that. Councilman Spatafor.
First of all, I just heard Dan say there's, he's not going to be here, so there's another vacancy to account for, everyone. I don't know.
I got about two years.
All right. Get, get working on that. So, thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for presenting these things. I really am very interested in this Striker program. I think I heard Jake and Desiree talk about it and the mayor's mentioned it to me a couple of times. I do hope if, even if we don't get the grant from Congresswoman Slotkin through the federal government, that we take a serious look at, at it because it is, it's a pretty interesting way to take care of all the equipment that we need. Not really at you, but you're here talking about, no, I'm sorry. I probably wasn't saying anything useful anyway, but not really directed for you, but you brought up the subject of new buildings. And this is, I'm new relative to this discussion. If the last building was built in the seventies, how do we fund infrastructure like that at the city? That's a question I don't know. I know that, you know, school district, I would go to the voters for a bond and we'd do that, but how do we do that here?
Vice President Wood.
We did bond and that's how we built two new fire stations, the one on Miller and the one on Pleasant Grove. Those are the newest fire stations and those were built not in the seventies, those, you know, they've been since I've been here, so, yeah, those, those two. And it was a bond and then there was additional money that was put into other fire stations that needed some upgrades at that time.
And so, those bonds, when passed, don't count against our millage rate cap?
Pardon?
When we pass the bond, it doesn't count against our millage rate cap as a city at nineteen point four, wherever we are?
Um, when we pass those bonds, we weren't up to the, to the threshold that we are right now.
Got it. So, that mechanism probably...
Jake, do you want to, do you want to add anything there in terms of how that works?
To my knowledge, the levying a debt millage under bonds would not count against our operating millage.
Correct.
But I would defer to legal and army...
Some bond attorney was here.
Yes.
Very good.
Bot Dagma would be a great resource.
So, that, I was just, I was just curious. That was a mechanism that is available to us?
Yes, that's how it was done.
Thank you. That's really all I have for today. Thank you for being here, though.
We have other questions or comments for Mr. Comm? All right. We appreciate you being here tonight. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to discussion action item H. This is, let's see, a discussion on budget policy since we have time. And I did ask Vice President Wood if she would take us through the, the proposed amendments. As for folks that are, are just tuning in, essentially what we do every year as part of the budget process is we not only pass a budget, a proposed, or I should say, a fiscal year budget, but we also pass a series of budget policies. These are not to be confused with the priorities. The priorities are something that we actually take a look at in the fall and that is basically council's wish list to the administration to work to put together the following year's fiscal year proposed budget. But again, what we are looking at tonight are a few different amendments to the budget policies. And for that discussion, I'm going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you. The first change, other than dates, you will see on page two, and actually, we're going to make an amendment to that after speaking with the city attorney's office. Currently, what it says in yellow that you have in front of you, it says, "Any residual funds in the salary line item that would create a new position after council appropriates a budget must come back to council for approval." What we're going to do is to change that to say, "Council," after the comma in budget, "council request notification of the changes in positions within sixty days of action."
All right. Is there any discussion? No. Uh, Councilman Spatafor.
That passes the Jim Smirka smell test?
Yes, he's, it passed, yes.
No questions.
So, are you asking for us to move on each one of these?
So, so we can do it a couple of ways and we've done it a couple of ways in the past. And Vice President Wood, whatever you're comfortable with. We have at times discussed all of them and then part, as part of the budget, we've actually moved the budget and the policies together. Or we could, we could act on the amendments right now and then we could actually approve this, this set of policies now.
Okay. Right now, I'm seeing some heads nod, so we'll go ahead and move this first amendment.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Then on page three at the top, the sentence reads, exceeds fifteen percent of the general fund, and it says revenues, it should read expenditures. And that's the correction.
All right. Any questions?
So, this, I would move this amendment.
Is a motion on the floor? Seeing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
As council members know, at the end of page three, we have had language in there talking about civil actions, claims and damages. There's been quite a lot of discussion concerning boards and authorities and making sure that those that serve on those boards and authorities are covered. The city attorney has presented language that would make sure that this is incorporated. That's on page three and moves over to page four. Again, this is recommended from the city attorney's office for change. So, with that, I would move this change.
If there's a motion on the floor, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then on page four, under transparency and accountability in government, this was a recommendation by Councilmember Spitzley, who is dealing with her mother who is ill at this time, and asked that this be added in. And that's an annual report and the metrics for the 3-1-1 call center. Number of calls, number of calls refers to departments, number of calls not referred, but assisted by the 3-1-1 center. And I also believe Councilmember Brown had asked for some of this as well. So, with that, I would move this portion.
All right. There's a motion on the floor, further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. And that takes care of the budget policies.
Councilman Spatafor.
I just, I, I apologize, I didn't get this to you in writing. This has just come up to me. We don't, I don't think the $300,000 in the HR operating line item is there for racial justice. I think, is that program still ongoing or was that not in the budget? The very last one, racial justice and equity plan, it says to remove.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, I would move to strike that paragraph.
So, I would move to have that, the last one struck.
Great catch. We had actually talked about that prior to the meeting. Okay, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion?
Just apologies for not bringing it up earlier.
I'm sorry. We all discussed it and I didn't look, okay.
Good catch. All right. Seeing and hearing okay, Mayor Shore.
I guess I have a question.
We're, is it on this policy?
Yeah. If it's not this, then we'll, thank you so much. So, with regards to the racial justice and equity plan language being struck, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mayor Shore.
I guess my question is for the city attorney. I thought we dealt with this last year. Under the grants, I thought it was, can we be required to submit any grant that we are applying for to council? I thought in the past, we said we had to get acceptance for appropriating, but when we apply for it, it was a request. But the Shaw language is back in. Oh.
Yeah. I don't remember, I think, but I do recall that discussion and the...
Can you turn the microphone on?
Yeah, put your microphone on. If I recall correctly, without look...
Move it a little.
If I recall correctly, the discussion was that you would approve the application for the grant, not the acceptance, but when the money came in, you'd have to appropriate it to some account, but without checking the prior budget policies, I really can't be sure on that yet.
Okay. We first have Councilman Spatafor, then Vice President Wood.
If I recall, Mr. Mayor and Mr. President and the body, this came out of, I was sitting on Ways and Means when this happened and there was a grant that came through that we'd already expended and then had to accept and the council was not supportive of it, of accepting it, but rather than putting a hole in the budget, we accepted it and then tried to fix this so that the process would be that if it was going to require council approval for acceptance, that you notify us that you're applying for it so we have objections ahead of time. We could let you know so that we didn't leave money on the table or, or end up expending money that we didn't have. So, this is only for those that require us to accept. If there are any misgivings from the council that we would be accepting those dollars, we could express that at the application stage instead of after the acceptance.
Okay. As I recall, so it's not, it says shall be submitted to council, but I don't have to be, it doesn't have to be approved by...
No, the application...
That was the change. Okay. My apologies.
Unless Councilmember Wood has something different.
Vice President Wood.
And if you look at the last sentence, that clarifies it. Any grant that can be applied for administratively shall be submitted to council review within ten days of the application. That's, that's the thing. So, it's not meaning that we have, you have to have our approval to submit that. You can do that administratively, but we just need to know that there, that you have started that process.
Very quickly, Mr. Smirka.
Your council liaison deputy city attorney just looked at last year's budget. It's the same language last year.
Yeah.
All right. Are there other questions or comments? All right. That takes us to...
All right. One thing that I can add favorably in the terms of best practices for the city, we have, in the course of the past two years, implemented additional policies and procedures within the finance department, additional stages of review for contracts that come before us. And so, before we review any contract, one of the things that we look at is whether or not city council has passed a resolution accepting and appropriating the use of funds and we have held up contracts for weeks and months waiting on that approval. And so, our procedures are not flawless or subject to human error, but we are in a better place than we were a few years ago when this might have been proposed.
All right. Thanks so much. We appreciate that. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that takes us to discussion action item H. This is the resolution pertaining to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget and budget policies. In your, first, let me say how much I appreciate departmental directors, agency leads, over the last several weeks, the patience that they demonstrated, the information that they were able to provide. And I also appreciate this body coming up with maybe an approach that was more of a happy medium, in terms of maybe what we did five to 10 years ago, and then, you know, in comparison to maybe what we did during the pandemic. I think we were able to really kind of hone in budget conversations, which has not always been the case. You know, when we would entertain presentations and annual reviews and things of that nature. But again, to the departmental directors and the agency leads, we really appreciate you all, just in the patience. You know, I think of Chief Solzobee as an example, who sat, you know, here for about two and a half hours one night, only to find out he was not going to be able to present that night, and then actually came the next meeting. So thank you, if you're watching, we really appreciate you all. You certainly helped us, as we worked to understand this budget and determine whether or not this budget really serves the city's purposes. So again, thank you. That being said, in your package tonight, what you have is you have the fiscal year 2023 budget resolution that pertains to the budget as presented by the administration. You also have the Spatafor fiscal year 2023 budget resolution proposal. There's also an amendment being proposed by Mr. Jackson. And then you also have the policies that we just amended. So with that being said, I'm going to turn the floor over in terms of the amendments to Councilman Spatafor.
Mr. President, thank you. I would move the amendment that is labeled the Spatafor amendment, but I will note that it was a team effort with conversations around the budget and things that we'd heard at this table, as well as conversations with council members. And I will walk through the changes, if you're all good with that. Page one, nothing. Any questions? Page two, no changes to those fees. Page three, no changes to those fees. Page four is when the fun starts. So you'll see, there were a few things that were changed. Sherry, as she does, she pays attention to the details, and caught a few little errors that were done, and working with Mr. Brower, identified some Excel formula errors, so we were able to make sure that those worked out correctly with hidden columns and whatnot. But the first change that council is proposing is the addition of $550,000 of state revenues related to marijuana. We received those extra revenues, and we're appropriating, or we're putting those into the budget for next year. As far as the city council budget goes, that's, any questions on the revenue side? It's really just kind of straightforward. Would you prefer I keep going, or just stop? Okay, great.
Keep going, yep.
City council budget, there was a lot of consternation around this table, around city council funding the 3-1-1 program. Regardless of money in, money out, we moved that money out of our budget, $37,562, and put it into the finance department, where that'll be housed there. Moving down a little farther, the neighborhood and citizen engagement department. The clerical position, there was a clerical correction of $40,000, but $80,000 of that was neighborhood, the neighborhood grants. And what you'll see is, along the way, there were a number of grants that the mayor has proposed using ARPA funds for separately, at larger amounts. So what we did in this amendment is moved the baseline amount of those grants back into the city's operating budget, and then the Ways and Means Committee is now weighing and meaning, if you will, the merit of the additions using ARPA funds through a separate resolution. So we're keeping them in the budget at their current year level. That way, as that work is being done in Ways and Means, we can add or not to those numbers, but we've kept them held in the budget, so that they are city programs. They would still have been city programs, but they're held here.
Very quickly, Vice President Wood.
And just to add on to Councilmember Spatafor's comments, these are ones that if you had looked at a previous year's budget,
Yes.
you would have seen them as part of the general fund in there. So it's not, as if these haven't been part of.
Correct.
our general fund budgeting in the past.
Correct, yes. Moving on down to EDMP, economic development and planning, $175,000 for the EDC contract facade program. And then it appropriates that dollars into the EDMP operating budget. That is another one of those city-funded programs that was funded at $175,000 in our general fund. The mayor proposed that amount, plus an increase in the ARPA fund. We're putting it back in the general fund, and then leaving the ARPA increase as a separate conversation. Moving down to finance and operating, finance operating, excuse me, additional hours for part-time buyer and temporary help for the audit season. That was added in discussions, that was an omission in the previous draft. And that also moves $37,562 into their operating budget for the city council's share of the 3-1-1 program. Page five, no changes. Page six, city-supported agencies. We restored the arts and culture grant at $167,500, and the advanced peace grant at $240,000. Those are the original FY '22 amounts that the mayor proposed last year and funded, and we funded separately with the advanced peace changes, for a total of $407,500 in city-supported agencies, leaving the remainder in the ARPA program, to be determined later. Moving on down, that's the general fund changes. And then, of course, to accommodate some of those changes, we've appropriated an additional $212,500 in federal reimbursement, in addition to the $550,000 in marijuana reimbursement, to balance out the general fund expenditures to revenue. Moving on to our restricted funds. Restricted funds, we cannot amend as a city council, but they can be changed as part of a mutual agreement between the administration and council, a lesson I learned from Councilmember Wood on a phone call Thursday. So, thank you, Councilmember Wood, for continuing to be my Wikipedia of council operations. But we do have a change that Councilmember Daniels has worked on with the administration, and I'll turn it over to him, with your permission, Mr. President.
Sure. Councilman Daniels.
Thank you, President Hussein. So, there was going to be a lowering of the local street funds this year, which would have impacted street repair. And everyone knows the pahls are incredibly bad this year. So, I actually reached out to the mayor and the administration, and talked to them about moving $500,000 from the major streets fund, the reserve fund, into local streets, to make sure that street repair can get done this year. And so I just had to have it approved by them.
All right, well done, we appreciate that.
Yes.
Are there questions, are there comments? Mr. Jackson.
I guess just generally, if anybody could explain, are there any, based on the proposal here, are there any programs or areas that are explicitly going to be cut? Or are we just simply moving funds from ARPA to general and mixing it up where there's nothing that's going to be discontinued?
So it would be disingenuous, so there are no cuts being made by these changes, unless you want to view the increase that the mayor proposed in some of the programs through ARPA compared to what we're funding at last year's level as a cut. But there is no, there are no cuts, everything is being funded at at least last year's levels.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Other questions on the amendments?
There's one more, Mr. President.
Sorry, what's that?
One more change, just to point it out.
Yep.
There's a late budget request from the administration, $500,000 in the wastewater fund to use on operating for facility improvement activities. Jake, I don't know if you wanted to address that, if any, there are any questions, but this is just something that was, it's a restricted fund, so we just put it in for you. I'm sorry, it's on page nine, or nine of the amendment, but.
Forty-five of 52 of the package.
Forty-five of the package.
But it's going to be easier if you look at the resolution, okay.
Any, this is the wastewater facility improvements. Any questions on that? We can direct them to Jake.
Any questions, seeing none? Do we have a, do we have a motion, Councilman Spatafor?
Yes, I made the motion.
Oh, okay.
But I do want to, I do want to address something real quick, Mr. President. A number of folks, well, two tonight, and a number of folks throughout the last few weeks have addressed the committee on Ways and Means in this body regarding the Morse Park Pool and other ARPA projects. That project is, that discussion's being had in Ways and Means right now. Just because you've seen something happen tonight, doesn't mean it might not happen in Ways and Means. Councilmember Jackson has been very vocal and concerned about the Morse Park Pool, I will say, to the Ways and Means Committee, and myself. And we are considering that as part of the ARPA discussions as well. So I don't want you to think that tonight's the final discussion, decision on that, but there is a separate ARPA conversation being had regarding those ARPA plans, as in Councilmember Wood.
And if folks, and I really wanted to consider the motion and vote on the motion, but since you brought that up, if folks are interested in participating in that conversation, the next meeting that you're going to discuss that is.
Yeah, we're discussing it on the 23rd of May at 4:00, and the 6th of June at 3:00, and then the.
The meeting on the 23rd is 4:30.
4:30, oh, that's right. And then, the 6th of June is 3:00. And then, the 23rd, the 13th of June is back to 4:30. So we'll have three more meetings on that discussion, on that item.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, that takes us to Councilman Jackson's proposed amendments. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, so it should be one amendment. And this little piece of paper on page 47 of 52 is like the bare minimum to try to explain what I'm doing here. So, as you know, climate action's been important to a lot of people in our community, and including the mayor. A little background, it looks like currently Lansing is, well, the mayor's part of the conference of mayors, who has a call for action to try to get on pace with the 1.5 report and carbon neutrality, where the city of Lansing's part of race to zero. We also committed to being carbon neutral by 2050, which means that's a 58% reduction by 2030. And you know, we're already talking about fiscal year next year, so do the math, that's not too long to have such a huge reduction that we are committed to. We also, in 2017, passed a resolution that says, "We affirm the intent to take action based on the Paris Accord", which also says, "If we don't take action quickly, we're doomed", basically. So with that, this on paper reads that I'm asking for only $50,000 to be added to the current $50,000. But I made a mistake when I requested that to Sherry. I meant to add $100,000 to make a total of $150,000 towards the line item that apparently, according possibly to Jake, is public service personnel operating? Is that right?
Yes, public service operating.
And that's where that $50,000 was kind of put in, where Lori Welsh, our sustainability manager, was going to be able to use that towards the climate action plan and implementation. But I am moving this amendment because I think that a mere $50,000 is not enough, based on how, one, important it is, but, two, committed we are. And honestly, $150,000 isn't that much in the grand scheme of things, but as far as just moving the nugget forward just a little bit, and to have a little bit of operation, I'm proposing that we move $100,000, even though it reads 50, but we're just do 100, and then switch the numbers a little bit, and I got those numbers here, $100,000.
So then the operating would go to 9,675,390, and then the money's coming from?
General fund. And that's for a lack of, you know, controversy, other places.
Mr. Brower, could you, could you speak to that, and to the, you know, whether or not that would balance?
Yeah, speaking from a purely technical perspective, you could either use the accounting line, use of contribution to fund balance, either adding the 50,000 there, or at the bottom of the general fund portion, under federal reimbursement, add an additional negative 50,000 to the number, which should take the 262,500 to 312,500, by my calculation.
Councilman Spatafor.
I have a question for Jake. So, everything that we moved back into the budget was destined for ARPA funds, so it had run the traps on eligibility. So, can you opine at this time as to whether or not that would be eligible expenditures of ARPA funds? And if you can't, that's okay, it just means we have to, that's, we have to think about that.
We can use ARPA funds for revenue loss to support government services, to the extent that we can prove lost revenue. As of this date, we can prove, according to the U.S. Department of Treasury's model, that we've lost $29 million of revenue, so that's $20 million in government services we can use revenue loss dollars for.
And we're using 9.7, 9.5 in this budget, and then five in last year's budget? So we're, okay. That answers my question.
All right, are there other questions or comments?
Oh, I had one more question.
Vice President Wood.
Just for clarification, you are asking for an additional $100,000 to go with the 50,000 that is already in there? Is that correct?
That is correct. On this paper, it reads 50, but that was a mistake when I was communicating to Sherry.
Okay.
So, yep, go ahead.
And for clarification, because our general fund is balanced now, based on the resolution that we just passed, we're looking at either taking $100,000 out of the rainy day fund, or take, adding an additional $100,000 out of the federal reimbursement. Is that correct, Jake?
That is correct. You can also note that there is $2 million of the proposed ARPA spending plan that is related to council member projects, and this could be considered part of that.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to turn the floor back over to Mr. Jackson, just so he can clarify exactly what his amendment is. Thank you.
So it sounds like I can choose between those two options, but really, I don't care which one it comes from. So, whatever the DIAS is concerned with, would be what I would go with. So maybe since this conversation, if anybody wants to team in and say, what you're more likely to vote for would be what I would more likely to move forward.
Councilman Spatafor.
Sir, Councilmember Jackson, my preference, as we go through this ARPA discussion, would be that we, that you bring this to Ways and Means to do in the ARPA budget, rather than the GF. And, because it will have an impact on the remaining ARPA funds that we've been, we've been tooling around with in the committee for the last couple of months. So that would be my preference, is that if I could encourage you to table this and bring this to Ways and Means for discussion, as the department, in my conversations, doesn't see the necessity for this yet. I haven't yet talked to Director Kilpatrick about whether this should come in or come out. So, that would be a good conversation, I think, to have at a later date. But that would be my preference, I don't want to blow a hole in the general fund.
Vice President Wood.
I guess the question I would have for the administration would be, based on the information that you've had from Lori, do you believe there's a need for this additional dollars at this particular time for the study that Mr. Jackson is advocating for?
Mayor Shore.
Yeah, Lori did indicate additional dollars, she didn't tell me how much. I know in the budget before you, you have $57,000 additional dollars, which I think Councilman Jackson referenced. I couldn't tell you an exact number. But I know Lori did, as part of recommendations, ask for additional assistance, whether it was part-time help or something else. But I think that was, I think Director Kilpatrick thought that was encompassed within his budget proposal to council, but that is certainly a good question for Lori Welch.
But we haven't heard that, the money being proposed, that it doesn't suffice. We haven't heard that from Lori.
I haven't heard a number. Again, she indicated part-time assistance, and again, Director Kilpatrick put the $57,000 in. I'm sure she would take it, but, but I have not heard that, a specific number request.
Vice President Wood, then Councilman Jackson.
Okay, just so that I can clarify, I believe the amendment Councilmember Jackson asked for had to do with a study, not hiring staff.
Oh, is that?
I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's the case. Councilman Jackson, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so not necessarily a study, but money to help her in her implementation of the climate action plan, and the things that she's doing within her role. We had her into committee twice already, and she did indicate that she could use additional money, and she knows that there was possibly $50,000. But also, of course, she would take it, but I mean, I don't know what all she can do with 50,000, 100,000, or 150,000, but she certainly said that she can use it all.
Councilman Brown, Councilman Garza, then Vice President Wood.
Um, I know in speaking with Lori, she was talking about, you know, wanting to, wanting to have some more support. And I spoke with her in committee about the potential for grant writer. And she made a comment about that would be useful too, but it wasn't directly tied to her work or the grant writer within the city as well. She said that would really help having the grant writing support to get additional funds, you know, to build that out.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Is, is Mrs. Welch, is she still working for MSU? Is she like part-time with the city right now?
That I cannot answer. Mayor Shore, there was a question regarding Ms. Welch.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So is, is, is Ms. Welch, is she still working for MSU? And does that mean that she's part-time with the city?
No, she's never worked for MSU.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we have a, we had a consultant that came on from MSU who helped draft the initial version of the report. We have that report in front of us, and we're actually vetting that and coming out with the climate action plan. But Lori Welch was our CART staffer before she became our sustainability, so she's always worked for the city of MSU.
All right, thank you.
Vice President Wood.
So now I'm hearing that what we're looking at doing is essentially hiring a contract position, because there's no way those funds would look at hiring a position within the system. So I'm assuming we're talking about, you know, a contract position. We have positions open now that we can't fill because we have heard that our pay rate that we're paying isn't commensary with the outside. And so I guess I'm really reluctant on, at, at this particular time, with this particular position. I, I understand Councilmember Jackson's enthusiasm to try to work to achieve this, but, you know, I think, you know, just throwing money at it is not necessarily the way to work through some of these things. And if I remember correctly, you know, part of the other thing that we have in our budget is a grant writer that's going to be doing grants for the city. So, I, you know, right now, we have had to hire, under a contract position, bringing somebody back who wrote grants, but we didn't have anybody here to be able to fit, to help facilitate those grants. So, we had to bring somebody back to help me. So we had to bring somebody back to help make sure that we're doing the reporting right. So I just, I think this needs to be thought out more. So that's, that's my thoughts on this.
And I appreciate that. So after the commentary and the questions, Councilman Jackson, I'm going to turn the floor over to you to address, and if you still want to move an amendment that pertains to everything we've just discussed, we just simply need to know exactly dollar amounts and where it comes from.
Sure. So I will move the amendment, you know, whether it passes or not is to be determined. But I think one day soon, you know, history is going to look back on all of us. And when we're at this crucial point, you know, what were people doing? They're saying the cities are responsible, the states are responsible, the feds are responsible, the world's responsible. But, you know, if we don't do anything, we know what will happen based on all of our commitments and all of the science and everything that we have affirmed. So I certainly will move the 100,000 addition from the general fund, federal reimbursement. Is that, is that one of the options? And that would move to the public service personnel operating and intent to help Lori Welsh and the sustainability manager.
Okay, can I stop you? So I'm a little confused. My understanding is it was one or the other. So if we're doing, on paper, it's looking like the money is coming from the federal reimbursement. So are we just increasing that an additional 50,000? Is that what we're looking to do?
Yes.
No, I mean, on top of the 50, that was already being proposed. Okay, so now what we're looking at doing is 100,000 in terms of the federal reimbursement? Perfectly.
Yes.
Okay. Does, so everybody understands what's before you, correct?
So at the 362?
It would be 312, correct?
Now 50, it wasn't.
Yeah, so you add 50 to 262, it would take that to 312,500. All right. Okay, there is a motion on the floor for the questions, discussion. Councilman Garza.
All right, thank you. I'll be quick. So if we pull this from the, our federal ARPA funds, then we have to find a way in the budget next year to replace this, to keep it going? Is that my understanding? Okay.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion does not carry. All right, that takes us, ladies and gentlemen. Do we have any other amendments before the body tonight? Any proposed amendments? Seeing none? That takes us, no, I think he's, I think he can't.
Stretching.
Oh, okay, perfect. So that actually brings us then to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget and budget policies. And we would need a motion for approval.
I would, I'm assuming you were looking at me, so.
Yep.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the amended policies and budgets as presented and voted on by this body for approval out on the floor this evening.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Oppose.
All right, motion carries, and I think.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh. Do we need to?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, Vice President, oh, separation.
I would move to reconsider.
Yep, on the motion to reconsider, further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I would move to separate the budget.
All right, there is a motion to separate the budget. I would assume we're talking about HRCs.
HRCs and the.
And 54A District Court.
54A District Court.
All right, on the motion to separate, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So what we'll do is we'll take a look at the HRCs Department budget first.
I would move to recuse myself. My, I'm the executive director of RSVP. We receive funding from the city for that. It's only for programming, it's not for salaries, but I am moving to recuse myself.
All right, on the motion of recusal, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries now on the HRCs Department's budget.
Mr. President, I'd move the HRCs Department budget.
All right, on the HRCs Department budget, is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. And then on the 54A District Court's budget, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. I move to recuse myself for the reason that I work in the courts directly with them and to avoid any appearance of impropriety.
All right, on the motion of recusal for Mr. Jackson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Vice President Wood on the 54A District Court.
I would, thank you. I would move the 54A District Court budget.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Oppose.
Motion carries, and then on the balance of the budget and the policies. Oops, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Mr. Jackson.
We did the.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, it's all good. Okay, so it, it still passes. All right. So on the balance of the budget, Vice President Wood.
On the balance of the budget, I would move the budget.
All right, as well as the policies?
As well as the policies.
There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Oppose.
Motion carries, and with no other business before the body, we are adjourned at 6:00. Oh, my goodness. Reluctantly, I'm going to say yes. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. It's just, it's relevant. I did text our HR director to ask her about some of the fire questions, so just to report to everyone. She says that HR is in the process of vetting applicants for qualifications. We have 14 openings to be filled. They'll be processing them, and she'll be meeting with the chief, and he has permission to, to front-load by 3:00. So we are actually looking at 17 right now. To be fair to Dan, these updates were given to the union, but he wasn't able to be there a few days ago, so he did not have that information. But we are in the process of vetting and hopefully hiring up to 17 of our firefighters.
Look what you guys started. Councilman Garza.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Well, I appreciate the movement on this now, but do you know by any chance how long those positions have been unfilled for?
We've had positions unfilled for a very long time because we fill them. People retire, someone gets fired, somebody just leaves. We've seen that going on for a long time, and we haven't front-loaded in the fire department. We will now.
Okay.
But we, we would, we have filled them and then had people leave and filled them and had people leave. But we will now be front-loading to prevent going under again when retirements happen. We'll be front-loading more than three, but that's how many are going to be retiring very soon.
Is there, is there any rea, sorry, I don't know.
Nope, you're fine.
Last question, I promise. Is there any reason why that we've been front-loading the LPD but not the LFD?
We were short, we were short coming into my, coming into, when we first came in, we were short with, with officers.